The meeting of the Little Elm ISD Board of Trustees in open session on August 18th at 6:19 at the Little Elm High School Lecture Hall. I am Delian English, President of the Little Elm ISD Board of Trustees. On the board behalf, I'd like to welcome all of you who are present and to our video viewers. Let me introduce my fellow trustees and staff. Sitting right is Leanna Harding, our Vice President. Trustee Cooper Bigas. Missing is Trustee Christopher Williams. To my left is seated Acting Superintendent Matthew Gutierrez. Trustee Alex Flores, our Secretary. Missing Trustee Stephanie Gregg. And Trustee Melissa Meyer. For our cabinet members, we have present Assistant Superintendent Lenny Engel, Acting HR Director Clara Epps, and Acting Executive Director Cindy Mika. For the public, this is an open session, so we will have public comments available. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cooper Bigas.
Here.
Ms. Leanna Harding.
Here.
Mr. Delian English.
Here.
Mr. Matthew Gutierrez.
Here.
Mr. Alejandro Flores.
Here.
And Ms. Melissa Myers.
Here.
And absent, Mr. Christopher Williams and Ms. Stephanie Gregg.
At this time, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to U.S. Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
First item on the agenda, open public hearing to discuss the proposed 2014-2015 budget adoption and tax rate. Assistant input for public hearing as well as adjourned public hearing will be available. Open citizen debate at 6:21. Is there anyone available for citizen input?
We need to do that for the hearing. We need to do the hearing first.
Open the hearing first.
Yes, we need to open the public hearing.
Oh, citizen input now. Yeah, citizen input. Yeah.
Do we have any citizens?
Hearing citizen input.
For the hearing.
Yes, sir.
Sonya, for the, for the budget, do we have citizen input?
Well, the budget has to be first, the presentation.
Oh, correct. Okay, great. Okay. Great, thank you.
No, we're doing those.
So we're going to open the public hearing. All right, so let's open the public hearing.
Go ahead and do that. The public hearing isn't until 6:45.
Oh, we're moving.
Okay.
We're moving to 6:45. So we'll do citizen input up first. And the first person, we have three people speaking for citizen input. The first one available is Ms. Anna Williams. And prior to your citizen input, let me read really quickly what we have for citizen input. Thank you for your interest in Little Elm ISD meeting. The Little Elm Board Trustees are held in public according to the Texas Public Information Act, which requires advance notice. Note that this is a meeting held in public, not a public meeting. Audience participation shall only be permitted at a regular board meeting and shall be limited to the public comment portion of the regular board meeting designated for this purpose. At all times during a board meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussion or debate on matters being considered by the board unless requested by the presiding officer. Board of Trustees meeting. Any person wishing to address the Little Elm ISD Board of Trustees during the period reserved for public comment at a board meeting must sign in to be heard according to policy DED local. It stipulates, at regular meetings, the board shall allot time to hear persons who desire to make comments to the board. Persons who wish to participate in this portion of the meeting shall sign up with the presiding officer or designated before the meeting begins and shall indicate the topic at which they wish to speak. No presentation shall exceed three minutes. Delegation of more than three shall appoint one person to present their views before the board. No response should be given during the public comment portion of a regular board meeting. The board should not deliberate or decide regarding any subject that is not included in the agenda presented with notice meeting. The board should not tolerate disruption of a meeting by members of the audience. I, after at least one warning from the presiding officer, when any person continues to disrupt a meeting by his or her words or action, the presiding officer may request assistance from law enforcement officials to have the person removed from meeting. This comment portion is intended for the presentation of complaint. It's not intended for the presentation of complaints. The board only considers complaints that remain unresolved after they have been addressed through proper administrative channels and they have been placed on the board's agenda. Please. Go right.
Thank you. My question, or my concern was regarding the STEM options. I noticed it was not on the agenda for this evening. And based on the workshop from last week, there was a special that the options were to be reviewed and then presented this evening. And my main concern is because out of the nine people on my board, seven of them are within the community, not just local to the tribute area. And they have all stated if they don't know the options, they really don't want to start school at that school, knowing that in three months they could be asked to go back to their previous homeschool as opposed to starting at the STEM. School starts Monday, and I need to know, am I going to have a full board or do I need to start recruiting more members now?
Next up, Mrs. Lisa Hooten. Is that, say.
Mine is a personal invitation. Good evening, Board and Mr. Gutierrez. I wanted to personally invite y'all to come by Zeller's at your great convenience to see the remarkable things that we have accomplished at the charter program for the employees of the district. My personal thanks to Ms. Engel and Rod Reeves and SFCC, who unleashed just a sorbent amount of creativity in that place and quality. And I just wish that y'all would come by and just see it because it's amazing. The kids love it, the parents love it. And I think we've created something that for the next 15 years, because this is celebrating our 15th year of operation, I think you'll go down and say, this is it. This is really a great place for our kids to be. So thank you so much for the privilege and the opportunity to be at the forefront of that operation. Thank you.
Mr. Mike Laughley?
Laughley, Paul. Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to address you guys during this part of the hearing. I just wanted to ask, you know, I wanted to basically just explain, I'm not sure how the parents are able to communicate with the board and have an opportunity to give input, other than, I mean, this is public comment, which is only going to be, not even going to be addressed or responded to, may or may not make the future agenda item, but I don't know how to communicate. I'd like to know that. I'm sure other parents would like to know that as well. Also, would like to have a brief opportunity to comment on your transition, the superintendent search and transition there. I recently emailed you guys. I don't know if that's the only way I have to communicate or not, but I did it anyway. I'm just back in from a couple days on leave and just got rushed over here to get here just in time for this meeting. I wanted to speak about, I work with a lot of parents. I've worked on the campus improvement teams, PTA, lots of stuff over the past three or four years with these schools at both the Lakeside and high school in this case, because I've got kids that are older. And I can just say that my interactions with the parents and even some of the administrators before some of these transitions and even since some of these transitions have really convinced me that it would be very helpful, in my opinion, as one parent speaking, if there was a little bit of a time lapse and a little bit of a transition, some kind of a lull or respite to allow people, the kids, the teachers and administrators to focus on the kids getting started in school before, and interim is my key word here, and that's the only word I know to use here, interim superintendent being brought in to steer the ship and/or help with this search for the new selection. I think a transition to a new face, especially if it was an external face, and they would be difficult for the parents and teachers and a lot of folks right now that are really having to try to navigate lots of transition and sort of a lot of the anxieties that come with it. And I would just encourage the board to really strongly consider giving a little bit of a respite here, however many weeks that might be, or months, whatever it may be, to allow these parents and teachers to focus on the kids and not be worried about another face, another name they got to satisfy and a bunch of more changes. Lastly, I responded to some requests from the district on, there was a list of about six or seven areas where parents can be involved, district wides, staff selection search and so forth. And I hadn't heard anything back yet. I don't know what that means or how I can get involved. I hear tell that it's being done completely random and draw out names of interested parties. And I don't have any argument with that, to be frank with you. I know we need to be fair and also on the HR side, when you're talking about selections, you need to really have a diversity of input. But at the same time, I think that parents that are engaged and have been there and have been involved before now and have become involved enough to where they understand the processes might be more helpful in some ways in that regard too. And I'm not dissing anybody in that regard. I just think that that ought to be considered when you're looking at particularly staff selection stuff. So I'd like for that to be considered. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Do you guys want to move the consent agenda item up? First, you want to do the superintendent's report? Matthew, you got any first consent?
We need to do the consent agenda. Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that. All right, we're going to move the consent agenda item up prior to the superintendent's report. There are several items on the consent agenda in which we will pull out of consent agenda for further discussion. In particular, items A, D, E, F, G, and H. We will pull out. So at this time, is there any motions to pull these items out?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, striking items A, D, E, F, G, and H.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Forty percent agenda. Open discussion. Improve or additional FTEs. Open that one up for further discussion.
Mrs. Epps with Human Resources will discuss the need for two additional FTEs.
Yes, good evening, Board members. We're asking for an additional FTE for the high school for the social studies position. You should have documents in your packet that provide a letter from Ms. Pentecost that outlines the need for an additional social studies FTE based on the economics and government courses. When we worked together and went through the different class sizes, there was some talk originally last spring of creating an economics and government position that would house 60 or more students in this room in the lecture hall with one teacher. That does not seem to be in the best interest of the students. And so we looked at an opportunity to expand by one FTE, which would offset some of the social studies classes and some of the sections that were overcrowded with coaching and that would provide more reasonable class sizes within social studies and specifically government and econ, because that's an area that addresses seniors, that's a required class for senior students. And so we want to make sure that those class sizes were taken down to really truly meet the needs of our seniors. The second FTE is for Lakeside Middle School. And if you recall earlier in the spring, we, with the reduction of students at Lakeside Middle School, we had dissolved two positions, an art and a Spanish position, because the reduction of students would decrease students, you know, for those electives. And as a result, going through, going through this summer then, first of all, we noticed that one of the issues, I believe, that is at Lakeside Middle School is we don't have a huge selection of electives. So as the electives were decreased, the class sizes, some of the seventh graders had to be removed to give eighth graders priority, and it started shifting class sizes and increasing class sizes in the regular classes as well. One of the other reasons that this happened was because the high school and the junior high had shared four teachers that, from an engineering teacher, a Spanish teacher, and a KATE teacher, four different teachers that were being shared between the middle school and the high school. The high school has needed those teachers back. So that four teachers took out five sections that then recalled basically to the high school to meet their needs. So in essence, they lost two full-time positions plus five sections of various electives. So we're asking for one FTE to put back into the art class to help alleviate the overcrowding and to offer additional space in the electives. Any other questions?
Where was the information? Because I don't have it in.
It's not there? It was.
We usually don't put HR documents in there because.
Isn't it on the list?
Yeah. I can email.
It says on here provided in executive session, so.
Okay.
That stuff's not, I mean, it's, we've always had that stuff in our packets before, I think, because it's not personally, it's not individually. The financial implications, I'm assuming that's $120,000, not $120?
I'm sorry?
The financial implication, I'm assuming that's $120,000?
$120,000, yes.
I know we've got an agenda item later about the budget. Is that included in the budget?
No, sure is not.
Okay.
We'll table this into after the budget. All right. Discuss and approve evaluation certifications.
The evaluations that were submitted for the 2013-14 school year are complete and have all been turned into Human Resources and verified. And we're just asking that you approve those.
They're just the annual reviews?
Yes.
For the teacher?
Yes, ma'am.
How have we certified that they've all been done? They've all been completed? The reason why I ask is, this has been an issue that we've had in years past, where people have been asked, people have skipped. And the reason why I ask to pull this specifically to, what's our process of control to ensure that everybody has been evaluated and signed off?
This, can I chime in for one second? This was something that the board had asked for last summer, and so this is the second year that we have done this. And so what we do in HR is we make sure that by utilizing a Google document, that we have, we keep track of all of our employees, and as soon as they come in, we ensure, we check it off and then place it into their personnel file. So that's how we ensure that we get 100%. And we set the deadline pretty early on, early May, so that we ensure we get them before June 1st.
Okay.
And just to add to that, our HR specialist and I ran campus lists of employees and literally verified, one of us went through and did the whole checklist and then handed it off to the second person for quality control.
Okay. This just has legal exposure implications, that's why I will double check and make sure.
Free discussions.
I move certify the LEISD 2013-2014 evaluations and appraisals as submitted.
There's a motion, it is a second.
A second.
It is a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Discuss and approve grading guidelines.
The grading guidelines this year, in the main part of the document, the only portion of the grading guidelines that changed were changed by TEA removing the mandatory grade placement for fifth and eighth grade mathematics based upon the STAR test. What that means is that this year, we will be waived from mandatorily retaining students who do not pass the STAR math test and been in eighth grade after three attempts. And the reason for this is because the new mathematics teaks go into implementation this year, and the, there's, it could possibly, in some districts, create a gap. We have really worked hard on this the past two years because we knew it was coming. What they did was, for example, they shifted this teak in fourth grade maybe down to third grade or second grade. So if your second graders hadn't had it and it's no longer being taught in fourth grade, then that creates a gap. And so we began last year reorganizing our bundled units and putting that into the correct grade level so that we made sure that we weren't skipping any teaks, that we knew were going to be implemented next year in a different grade level. But the state realizes that this is an issue, and so for fifth and eighth grade math, because we're implementing new teaks, they do not want to punish the students unnecessarily if they hadn't had the opportunity to learn those teaks in a previous year due to the rebundling at the state level. And so for one year, we are, the state is waiving the mandatory retention of those students. We still have it in reading, so we will still have student success initiative in reading. And students in fifth and eighth grade must pass the reading STAR test within three attempts or they're mandatorily retained. But in math, it's waived for the year. And so that's the change that was made in the main part of the document. The other part of the document was the, in the appendix for the dual-language grading, where we tightened that up. It had always, it's been something that was just a procedure that was followed, but after some public comments last month, we decided to formalize that. And so these are the grading guidelines that we utilize in the dual-language and the bilingual areas in order not to penalize students who are learning a second language.
I move to approve the grading guidelines as submitted.
There's a motion, is there a second? It is a discussion?
Yeah, I've got a few questions and just some concerns. There's been, with a lot of the portions that are district-related as far as the grading guidelines, I know that we've had a lot of issues with homework in the past, a lot of parents that were really concerned about how homework was implemented, turning work in late, getting grades. We've got in our policy about a prompt response, and a lot of parents were notified that students were able to turn their homework in a month late and still get credit for it. Being that that was the case and that was happening a lot, I don't consider that a prompt response, in my own opinion. And it really does, to me, it teaches our students responsibility, so we really want to stress that we need to put a focus on following the guidelines and the policy that we have. But I would also like with the new curriculum committee that we're setting up, is probably get the community to input along with the board and the staff to really take a good hard look at our grading guidelines. If there's something that we're missing, something that we're not getting, there was a lot of different comments over the last several months about our grading guidelines and some concerns that people had, parents especially. So if we can make sure and kind of get those involved, not at this moment, but we are getting that together, and I'd like them to take a good look at it when it's together, so.
No more comments on grading. There was a motion, it is a second. All those in favor of discussing approving grading guidelines? All those opposed? Motion carries. Vote for discussion approval of off-campus physical education.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Off for discussion.
Oh, we need to talk to, present.
Present.
Okay, so every year, we require to turn into TEA any off-site campus, or off-site PE program that the board approves. The guidelines are strict. They have to be an Olympic sport. We have two categories. We have category one, and in a category one, if a student applies for that, they have to train at least 15 hours a week in that sport at a supervised gym. If they do at least 15 hours a week, then they may just be, they may get the half PE credit for that semester, as well as be released for one period a day. So for example, they could be released first period or eighth period. Okay? And then if we can arrange their schedule that way, so that is when their typical PE class would book. The other category is category two, and in this category, it also has to be in an Olympic sport, but this would be a student that only practices five, between five and 14 hours a week, less than 15, more than five, less than 15. Okay? They may receive half credit per semester, but they may not leave school one period a day. Okay? And then in your supplemental handout, because we can't put this in your board book because it includes students' names, you have the actual applications that have been turned in today. So what we're asking is for you to approve these off-campus sites, and then I will turn them into TEA for approval.
Are they both there?
No, it's parents' responsibility. The only thing that we're responsible for is maintaining attendance and grade. And how that happens is that each six weeks, the instructor that has signed that they are in charge of this, they complete the attendance form that the student has maintained that 15 hours a week, because everyone that has applied has been a category one for us. And then they give us the grade that that student earns for their, for that PE credit. So they get a credit, they get a grade, but the grade is given to us by the off-campus site. And then we have the opportunity of monitoring the off-campus site by doing, going and doing site visits, making sure that they are doing what they said, what they signed in the contract that would be done.
Is there any monitoring of academic performance for these type of individuals? Just if they're falling below a D level or something, is there?
There hasn't been in the past because it's, it's not part of the UIL, no pass, no play, because it's not a team sport. Now, if they are also, for example, you might have someone here that's in the 15 hours for cheerleading or gymnastics. If they are also participating in that sport at our campus, then they would fall into the UIL. Now, every student is monitored for passing a certain grade, but what I, their academics is not part of this contract. It's only for their off-campus PE, for them to get their PE credit, because these are students that are performing sports at a high level, and they don't want to take PE with us.
How do we handle absences for events?
If this, they have to apply for this, they have to apply for this every semester. What we do is we apply to TEA once, and then for this group, they give us a three-year participation. Because we are constantly having kids come in and out of Sky High Gym or the Dr. Pepper Center, we typically, when I talked to TEA today, not today, but last week, they told me best practice is to go ahead and apply every year so you're always on this same schedule of start time, so you're not keeping up with that. They also advised me that if you have a student that isn't meeting their 15 hours, then they don't get that PE credit.
Let me ask you again, sorry. Somebody's got swimming, I have figure skating.
Right.
They've got a figure skating competition in Denver.
Okay, sorry.
So they take two days off from school to go to a competition in Denver. How do we handle that?
I'm going to tell you, I'm not sure, and I will get back with you at the next board meeting with that answer or in an email update, Friday update. I know that there's a policy on it, and I don't want to speak wrongly to it. I know that we give our students on UIL clear free absences, but I'm not sure if we give students that are competing at this level what the absence policy is.
Okay, okay.
How, how many credits do they need for PE in, to graduate high school?
Two, correct?
No.
Anyone?
One.
One.
It used to be 1.5 and now it's one.
So basically, one, that'd be?
Thank you.
Two semesters?
Yes.
Two semesters? So this is something that they wouldn't be doing, but maybe one or two semesters?
Well, we have students that are still doing it, um, but, um, for example, you'll have a senior in there, um, but they have the credits to graduate. They're doing it to get that period off because they're practicing so much. If a student is practicing 15 hours a week or more for sports, um, then they like that extra hour, uh, so they could start their practice earlier or end earlier so they still have the time to do their homework and studies.
And so, and I do see parents on here, so this is parents, instructors, superintendents?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any further questions? We had a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, can you go ahead and open the public hearing? Is this?
At 6:50, we will open the public hearing for discussion of proposed 2014 budget adoption and tax rate.
Thank you, members of the board, Mr. Viteras. Really, this, uh, this particular phase of our public meeting is to really allow anyone in the audience, any constituent, the opportunity to express any concerns or questions relating to our 2014-15 proposed budget. It is a statutory requirement of all districts to publish that we will have such a meeting. If there are any questions relating to the 14-15 budget, we'll be happy to answer those. We have done numerous presentations relating to the budgets at previous, uh, previous workshops and, but, uh, at meetings. So if there are any meetings, I'll certainly be happy to answer those if there are any questions. Yes, sir?
Two, two questions. The board and I think two board meetings ago called for a, uh, attempt to reduce the budget by $300,000. I've seen no report on it, if that's available, if there's been any progress made toward that, that would be question number one. Uh, question number two is that since the contribution from the Tribute HOA is roughly a million dollars per year, um, what is our financial obligation and impact to accept or reject those funds around that contract with the HOA? And how does that impact the financial budget that's about to be considered for approval?
I, I will certainly respond to those, the budget one.
If I'm not mistaken, this particular public hearing component is not, well, well, it's phrased this way, it's not about the budget, approving the budget, it's about to adjust the tax rate? Is that correct?
No, sir. It's actually about the proposed budget and tax rate.
About both.
So...
That's published in the...
Action item. Okay. So what's the difference?
Well, the difference is really just really some manings, Mr. Viegus, but it says, notice to, notice to public meeting to discuss budget and proposed tax rate. And so technically, you know, the question, there's a legitimate question relating to our budget, uh, we'd be happy to respond to though. The board did ask that we would go back and sharpen our pencils if it pleases the board. Then, you know, really what we'd like to do, we really don't need the power form, we'll get to that when we adopt the budget, uh, the board asked us to go back and sharpen our pencils and we did just that. We went back and reassessed, as we stated, 82% of the, the vast majority of our, uh, budget is in payroll. We went back and revisited our payroll items as well as some other areas and were able to actually reduce a couple positions at that time that we were not needing as well as looking at some cost factors in our benefits that we were no longer going to have to have the same amount of dollar amount. And also, we reduced our unemployment compensation pay as well that we were going to have to pay next year. So when we get to the budget items to answer the question, we did reduce that one. We will be presenting a balanced budget for our board's, uh, consideration for the general fund. We will be recommending our total revenue budget of $49,475,278 with total expenditures of $49,775. That doesn't add. That's, that seven should be a four, so we're actually presenting a balanced budget. Forget the seven.
So in short, you, you reduced HR expenses?
Uh, staffing position, staffing expenses.
Staffing expenses. Of which you just turned around and asked the board to consider additional staff increases on the backside of it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, they are. They are different after FTEs. And whenever we, the board authorizes every, uh, position that we have in position control and we were able to absorb those position, a couple positions that we were not, no longer needing. And so we did that as well as, we looked at, uh, our hires. We started doing the budget usually in about February and we budget a specific amount of money for teacher salary. As our staffing occurs, then we know that there's a little bit in there. If we hire a zero experience teacher, they're becoming a 45-5, whereas we budgeted about 16, we were able to go back and actually look at that. So looking at all of our numbers, we were able to go ahead and present a balanced budget. Now, after that point in time, there was some staffing needs brought up at the middle school and at the high school, and that's really what the board is, their HR director is asking the board to consider. And if the board approves that, then that budget would then be a deficit budget of about $120,000. But originally, the deficit was like $312,000 at the last board meeting, and I think Mr. Viegus asked, what he asked is if I could get the deficit down to $200,000. So we were really just exercising due diligence by, uh, scouring through all the payrolls to get it to that balance. And then these needs have been brought forth really because of the registration and the needs of the kids and the schedules.
Okay.
The other question you asked was really about, um, the HOA. The HOA, their payment is not in that figure at all by contract. Actually, the contract states that the homeowners association will start paying the district really in September of 15 and then in, uh, April of 16. Now, we would, we also stated that if we opened the campus earlier than that, we would revisit that, but those dollars are not included in there at all, but it is a contractual agreement.
So you have a balanced budget without accepting the HOA payments and all of that?
That is correct, sir.
Which were not received until September 2015.
They are not obligated by contract to, to actually pay those things until 15.
They are not or we are not?
They are not. They pay actually.
So it's not a contract to accept or provide those funds?
No, sir, it is not. It is a contract for them to pay the funds. Uh, the, the agreement states that if we opened the STEM, but the contract at the time when we entered into contract, we really did not believe we would get the STEM open any earlier than that. And it was after the fact that we made the contract that we were all together and they said, do you think you could get it open in 14? And then we stated that we would do everything we could with the help of everyone in this room and a lot of other people to facilitate that. So...
So if we do open the STEM, they are obligated to pay us?
That, that is a verbal agreement. That is not written in our, they are obligated to pay us, but whether they start paying is this September or next September is something that we will visit with them about. But they're obligated to pay us in September of 15.
In written contract?
Yes, sir. It is absolutely written.
Okay.
But we're obligated to have the students go?
Any other questions about the budget or the proposed tax? Yes, Mr. Viegus?
Couple of questions. Can you elaborate further as to what positions were put on hold or otherwise not, um, not going to incur those costs during the calendar year 2014 that, that made up some of that effort? Additional question related to severance for 2014 for previous superintendent? Was that, would that be incurred on this budget or was that incurred in the last calendar year 2014?
No, sir. I mean, uh, that particular payment was paid out of the 13-14 year.
Okay.
That's your first answer. The second answer, I can certainly tell you, we, uh, in 13-14, we had a staffing pattern at our high school. We had five APs, an associate principal and a principal. As most of you are aware, we hired a new high school principal that is, uh, sitting in our audience, I believe. Ms. Benacosta is here. Or she's working on employment. Well, when she came in, she reevaluated her needs and her needs and her pattern of leadership indicated that she really only needed four assistant principals, if you will, one for each grade level. Now, she restructured that to three APs, two associates in her position, but that allowed one AP, AP position for us to be able to absorb to help us to offset these figures. Uh, there was also a clerical position at one of our campuses because of the way we were delivering instruction in that program, no longer necessitated that additional aid position. And then also, we looked at our, uh, acting, acting positions versus the positions that we had previously, and based on that, we were able to use those numbers and look at those numbers and, and present a balanced budget.
And one of the things we heard last week was the assistant superintendent position was put on hold or paused or something, I think was, is that put on hold or paused through the entire calendar year or is that just?
No, sir, it isn't on pause during the entire year. We have used what we have as our acting figures in there, but also we have a contingency in there based upon the wishes of the board. If they move forward, then we have some contingencies in there to make the difference between the acting person and that CNI, that assistant superintendent for CNI.
And, and final question, is there a budget line item specific to, uh, search committee, search fees for the eventual superintendent?
You know, typically, the search firms' contracts are really written differently.
Correct.
And, uh, I don't have any idea what that would look like for this district or if there will be any cost associated to the district. I'm really just not sure what that contract agreement was. So, so no, sir, there isn't a specific line item for that.
So any cost incurred with search firm maybe would go to above, um, our current?
Yeah. I think the contractor agreement was, I think it was $12,500 is where we started at.
How much?
$12,500, I believe.
And so a $12,000, you know, $12,500 certainly, you know, we would look first to our budget to see if there's any areas in there that we could use to find those funds. We always try to look inter, within our budget to see if we can find the sources for the funds first before we come before the board, but if, uh, if, if those funds were not available, then we have it as a budget and then for the board's consideration.
I think we agree that that $12,500 that was presented to the board last Thursday is not going to be the final cost for that search firm or the fees that they, that the, the district could incur for, um, for hiring a candidate, potentially hiring a candidate they present to us. Correct.
Any expenditures that the board authorizes relating to the search firm, we would certainly bring back in a public manner to communicate.
Okay.
Any other questions relating to budget?
Is the, is the line item budget published for public view?
It, uh, there, we are required...
And if so, where?
You'll find it on our website. You'll find it by function, uh, and it's really easy to find. If you go to our website, once the board approves it, you'll find our budget by, it'll show your revenues and our expenditures. It shows it by function because we do everything by function, which is instruction or, and leadership or acquisitions of land, anything, we have a function for that. You'll also find it by object code, which is whether it's by, um, payroll or contracted services or any of those areas, but you'll find our budget to that detail. If you want greater detail than that, we'll be more than happy to provide that.
And what's the request mechanism for the entire budget?
The entire budget? You can request it through the open records request at my email address.
And, and one last question, is, is there an actuals versus a proposed 2013, last year's budget cycle? Is, is there an actuals that's been presented or available?
There actually is, sir. The board receives a monthly report every month showing where we're at on our, our current budget. And of course, our budget here in, ends August 31st and then our auditors will come in in November and audit that. But we actually put that information as well. All of our financial reports that we submit to the board are out on the website.
One more public statement since we're in this discussion, this goes back to the communication request from the, from the community, right? Public companies open, publish their finances openly, both historically, proposed and adopted, right? I would encourage the board to consider doing that, trying to hunt and pack different categories within the, the website. I mean, there should be a section on the website that says budget, 2012, 2013, 2014, all line items spelled out, right, in gap format.
And, sir, if you look under financial transparency on the website, you'll find a little house that says financial transparency, and if you click on that, you'll find all that information underneath there.
Proposed budget's on there today?
The proposed budget is not on there, sir, until at this point in time for 2015. It is not.
That's what I'm talking about. You, you, you put a proposed budget out there as a public company, right, so that your shareholders, and in this case, your voting public, have the opportunity to review it and ask educated questions at meetings just like this. If you don't publish it in advance, you can't prepare those voters for those, those questions until after, what your proposal is that they have viewed after it's already been approved.
Point taken.
My, my, my comment is that's way too late, right? Proposed budget's not being published at the beginning of the summer so that there's time for deliberation, discussion amongst parents, teachers, the board members, even the board members themselves, right? They should have it months in advance, which I know you guys do privately, right?
We can certainly facilitate that industry, which that's an easy request, and it's actually, it's a very, very good request.
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, just along those lines, we also have a finance committee who also will be in place to assist with the budgetary items and answering some of those questions and some of those deep intimate questions about how we do our budget for the public, um, common knowledge.
We appreciate, we appreciate your questions and your input. Thank you.
Any more, any more comment?
Are there any other, uh, large ticket items on the horizon besides these two additional FTEs that we're aware of? Anything that would be in excess of, say, $50,000 or $100,000, either to the plus or to the minus of the budget that we're aware of that the board hasn't approved as of yet?
Well, yes, sir. I mean, I, you know, the reason, what will happen with this budget is, of course, it is a living, breathing document. And if you're asking me, are there opportunities to where we may have to revisit a big ticket item? I would say that after the first two weeks of September, whenever we see exactly how many students we have and how many students we have in a class, it has always been our practice to go back and review our staffing allocations based upon the number of students we have. Our board has been very clear that they do not like, uh, large numbers of students in classrooms, so it is our job to bring that information back to them. And if that warrants either moving a teacher from one location to the other based on numbers or if it's, uh, if, if that requires that we come before the board and say, you know, we have classes that have 30 kids in them and we need to add an FTE in order to get those numbers down so that those, those kids have a better academic experience, that, that will be your big ticket item. If there is one, that's when that will occur. But otherwise, I do not...
That's planning to operate in the deficit. That's exactly what's going on with our federal government. You planning at the onset to operate in the deficit. Because you know through your experience, your collective experience, that the, this is a growing community, right? So the likelihood that we're not going to have every FTE that we need for every student that we have, because we don't have a perfect crystal ball, I get that, I understand that, right? But if you approve a budget that is balanced, that sounds good, it's a good buzzword, but if you know that, but you also know that you're a growing community, then you know that you're going to reach into your pocket and you're going to operate in the deficit.
Well, and I would agree with that except for the fact that we actually used our projected enrollment numbers when we did our staffing allocations. So we didn't use just the roll-up numbers, we actually used our demographers' numbers when we determined how much, how many FTEs we needed each...
I'm sorry, but the demographers' numbers and the projection of student enrollment has proved to be a huge failure looking at the academy process that it's in now. So I, I expect that you're going to reach into the budget for several FTE for courses this year, which will put us in the deficit, right? It's gonna, you're gonna be, you're gonna be Robin here to pay Paul. You're gonna take dollars out of next year to pay this year. It, it's, it's, it's a fundamental problem, in my opinion, to propose a budget like this and approve one like that.
Thank you for your input, sir.
I have a question. I'm not, this is quite for you, but maybe it's more toward the board. The question came up on the million dollars from the HOA that wasn't included in part of the, of the overall budget. I, I assume that it was not included in part of the budget because the clarity whether we paid it this September or next September have not been resolved, but is there a thought or a movement within the board to not accept that payment and try and get out of the reading of the homeowners association?
You know, sir, that's really out of the scope of this particular meeting relating to budget, I would think, but I, I can tell you...
It's a budget line item.
No, sir, it's not. It is not a budget line item at all. Uh, actually, it'd be other sources of revenue if, uh, when we, when we receive that payment. Uh, so I can tell you that personally, uh, I was involved in those negotiations. I think this board is committed to this, uh, the STEM Academy. I think it is really, the, the only factor that we have, the decision we have to make, in my opinion, based on it, is whether or not the payment is received in September of 14 or September of 15. But either way, it would be at other sources of revenue. It would not be a line item in this particular area.
Thank you, Senator.
Again, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Is there any more public input? At this time, we will close public input for the public hearing at 7:09. This thing will get back on, back on, back on the docket. Discussing food financial reports. reports.
Okay, I had a couple of questions.
Okay.
And I just, more for clarification. One item in particular was for kitchen equipment, I believe in Prestwick, I'm trying to scroll down. It was a, I want to say five thirteen?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I can't pull it up fast enough to-
It's fine, I, I have it before me.
Okay.
And this was whenever we entered into the construction agreement to build the Prestwick STEM Academy. We met to determine how much of that really related to the child nutrition department? Because if it related to your child nutrition department, then the child nutrition fund could be used to pay for those particular expenditure items. And of course, we had to go through a process, and we had to have the Texas Department of Agriculture approve it, which they did. And this is the amount of funds that is going to be paid out of the child nutrition funds toward the area of the Prestwick STEM Academy related to the kitchen area.
Okay, so is that what code forty-two is? Because I was looking down, I saw forty-two, I think, forty-one, forty-two. Or was that a typo?
No, that's forty-one, forty-two is the organization number of the Prestwick. When you talk about the campus, the high school, or all those campuses have, all our campuses have an organizational code, and that's the organizational code of the Prestwick STEM Academy.
Okay.
Okay? So, we're very appreciative that that was, that, that's the case, but that is what that is now.
Okay.
Any other questions relating to finance?
I did have one in my seat.
I moved up for the financial reports that submitted.
As a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. There's a first discussion. There's a motion, it's second. All those in favor of approving financial reports? All those pose, motion carries. Discussing an approved end-of-year budget amendment?
So moved.
So moved?
One second.
Second.
So, just a question, we're talking about approving budget amendments, we're not talking about approving a budget that's been, or-
It's last year's budget?
It's last year's budget? Okay.
That's what I was trying to get back to.
Okay.
It's three hundred thousand, it's moving things around, right?
Yes, sir. Really, what this does is that, as you all are aware, that when our, one of the items that our auditors reviews the defending school district on is whether or not they go over by function. We have a twenty-six digit budget code. After your fund is your function, and there is a statute that states if you go over by function, then you're over, on the expenditure side, then that is a, a write-up, a write-up, it is, by our audits. So, every year at the end, toward the end of the year, every school district, every finance person is going to look at their budget by function, and if they believe that there's any areas that may be over, then we're going to move them, move the dollars around in order to facilitate that. It's very standard business. And as you see, we're not taking these dollars out of fund balance, we're just moving dollars from one function to another function based upon the practices and experiences of the year in order to try to comply with that.
And I know that's what, I just needed the explanation for myself.
Do we, do we, I mean-
Hi, sir.
Do you have a second?
Just trying to keep-
We're waiting to vote.
But that's what I wanted from it, so. There's nobody else for discussion.
Any more for discussion? All those in favor of approval of end-of-year budget amendments? And opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Yeah, we did, we did that very, very, we approved it excluding-
Excluding it. Yeah, I don't-
I did it.
Yeah. Sorry. Okay, great. Yes, it's good, it's good. You want to do your, 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 your time? Okay.
We'll move into superintendent's report.
We're going to start with our bullying update by Cindy Mika, our executive director of accountability and student support.
Sorry, I'm going to close session, I was going to turn on the game. At the two board meetings ago, I was requested to bring back the procedures that we follow when we have a bullying incident on campus. And so, I have here provided for you our legal and our local policy, as well as the forms that we use. So, the legal policy for bullying, the definition actually is that it means engaging in written or verbal expression, expression through electronic means or physical contact that occurs on school property, at a school sponsored or school-related activity, or a vehicle operated by the district. And that has the effect, or will have the effect, of physically harming a student, damaging a student's property, or placing a student in reasonable fear of harmed a student's person, or of damage to the student's property, or is sufficiently severe, persistent, and pervasive enough that the action or threat creates an intimidating, threatening, or abusive educational environment for a student. So, this is the definition that we use. Our procedures and policies are laid out here, but I did, you asked for the specific form that we use, and so this is it. This form, anytime that we fill out a referral, and it comes in as bullying, this is the form that we, that the administrators fill out and then upload through focus. So, these are the steps that they take to determine if bullying actually occurred or did not occur.
So, this is how they start documenting in the incidents?
Correct.
Is, what kind of training do we have for the administrators and the teachers to make sure that they're, what they're witnessing is bullying, not just for the documentation, but is it something typical kids picking on each other versus someone that's fitting this description of what bullying truly is?
We have bullying training yearly at our campuses, and then we, I know that four of our staff members went this past Saturday for additional training in bullying, and that is something that we will also be bringing back to the staff this year.
So, all staff will eventually? And then with some of the programs that you talked about a couple of weeks ago, is there actual parent training?
Right.
Available?
The, we will be putting together the parent university that we talked about, and that was one of the reasons why four of our staff went to the training this past Saturday to get some ideas. And as soon as we are all back in session, most of our employees just started, that are in the counselors, et cetera, just began last week. And so, our SHAT committee, and then our communities and schools, and then the curriculum and instruction department, we'll be reaching out to the police department, and we will be working on putting together that parent university. We really want to aim for doing that in October, to be in conjunction with the red ribbon activities that go on, because we don't only want to focus on bullying, we also want to focus on drug abuse and physical harming that students might do to themselves. So, we want to give an array of activities that the parents can attend, different sessions. And so, we're looking at October for that.
Ms. Mika, one of the, so kind of the final stage of if bullying is found is transfer, I think I read somewhere, is that the final?
Yes.
Is tran, that part, that child's transferred to another-
Correct.
-school?
Correct.
Is that, have we had that happen? I guess my concern is that you transfer, you're pushing one to another district instead of fixing the issue.
No, we, we transfer the victim.
Okay. Not the, okay. Does it, it doesn't fix the issue with that child?
Well, we, we work with the, we work with the-
Please.
We work with the student who is named as the bully, okay? I mean, we have things such as discipline action plans and such, we're not going to just let a kid continue on their path of behavior. We also have DAE, and if it's persistent enough, then we can keep moving up the chain. So, we do have things in place. We have the discipline chart that y'all were given in, I believe in June, end of May or June, that lays out what those charts are. So, you know, on first offense, this is what happens. On second offense, this is what happens. On third offense, this is what happens. So, we don't just let that go. But the legal policy for the transfer is, is from the STEM.
Okay. Because I know there was an instance last year where the victim wasn't transferred to another school, the bully was.
Hey, and I don't, I'm-
So, I just wanted to understand better if that-
I don't know about that, because I wasn't in this position at that time, but I'll look into that.
What about situations where bullying is occurring outside of school or outside of school, involve the police, or?
The parents can involve the police. If, if it's happening outside of the school and it's not happening on school property, if it isn't coming to school, then we can't get, we don't get involved in that. We do encourage the parents to call the police. I don't know that that has happened. I do know of several situations that that has happened. It's very, I don't want to talk off point, but if it's happening outside of school, it's very likely that it's going to happen on school. We're going to get the report, and we're going to take care of it here. But if it's a, if it's a highly intelligent kid and they know the consequences off-campus and on-campus, it's possible it's not happening on campus.
Can you explain a little bit about, we have the form, what are some of the state requirements for us? For example, tracking some of this information, if there are state requirements to track some of the bullying?
We, we turn it into the Office of Civil Rights. Yes.
So, we track it on our campus level, and then we track it in-
And we track it in, in this document that I have here, it is tracked in focus. And there is a button on every single referral, is this a bullying incident? Yes, no? And so, it is tracked with every referral that we have.
So, could you just back a little bit and go over the process? So, once a student, or a student has been identified as potentially bullying another student or harming another student, the process, of course, is communication with the parents, and then we may take it into our hands if they're on campus, then that DAEP, et cetera. So, it's more of a, you know, proactive?
Well, and it is a, a lot of times, we will get the call that it's a bullying incident, but with the definition, it's not persistent, it's happened one time. And so, that's where it falls on us to communicate better what is bullying. And that is one of the things that we will be doing through the parent university, because if it happens one time on campus, and this is the first time it's ever happened, a lot of times, you know, I'm a parent, I'm my child's best advocate, I don't want my child to get hit. And oftentimes, we will have a parent call up and say, this child is bullying my student. So, this is why we go through the process, to determine if it meets the, the legal definition. Is this something that is reoccurring, or is this a one-time incident? We interview the victim, we interview anyone that was there, we interview the alleged bully, we interview the teachers, et cetera, to see if there's a pattern of this activity recurring. And so, it's not something that we take lightly. And so, we do interviews with students that are involved to see if, if we can determine if it is a bullying incident or not. When you have a student keep coming back, or another referral come up, then that triggers, this has happened again to the same student. And so, then that does trigger looking into it in a different way.
Yeah. Mr. Forrest, in point to your question, the statute specifically says, and this is one of the strange things, they changed the law to say this, that bully, the definition of bullying includes stuff that is written or verbal expression, what is it, expression through electronic means or physical conduct, and here's the important part, that occurs on school property, at a school sponsored or school-related activity, or in a vehicle operated by the district. And as was said, even if it happens off-campus, if it affects the educational environment, then we can do something. But one of the big issues that all schools are dealing with is the fact that a lot of cyberbullying happens off-campus, and it's not necessarily within the definition unless it has something that brews at school. And a lot of parents say, well, what are you going to do about it? It's not always an option of the school district, it depends on the circumstances of each situation.
So, so are you saying from a legal standpoint, if that cyberbullying continues where a student has a situation where at home, for example, they, somebody Facebooks and say, hey, you want to do something? If they come to school, and that person also does that during school time, and they have an electronic device, does that define?
That would be sufficient. If, if it affects the educational environment, so that even that child is avoiding that other child because of it, now it has affected the educational environment for that child, and we can step in at that point.
So, and I guess for teachers, if they're told of a bullying incident that happens on their block, but they're told about it, can they notify parents? Do we have an obligation to notify parents if we're told of a, or teachers are told of a situation, even though it may not happen? I know we don't have it here, we've got one high school, but now we're going to have two middle schools, but they live on the same block, and the kid gets picked on every day, and he goes and tells the teacher, and the other kid goes to a different school. Can a, would a teacher get in trouble, I guess is what I'm asking? Because I think, I know teachers probably will get this, will they be allowed to?
And I, legally, the obligation is not there, but I, I mean, I couldn't imagine a teacher that wouldn't step in and try and help sending the kids with counselor, counselors getting involved. That's why we have counselors in our schools. I mean, it is not, do we have a legal obligation? Does the law say we have to call the parents and tell them if we hear something? No, but it's, it's going to happen, and, and that we will, we will be-
But it's not going to hurt us either?
No, it's not going to hurt us. It won't hurt us if we don't, but I will put this in our, in our, in our-
I just don't want teachers trained in pre-
It won't hurt us if we do or don't.
Okay.
We have immunity, and we try to tell our teachers that they have immunity and they're protected for making those reports.
I just think about the kid crying in the middle of the mall, and you've got to be people are reluctant, because-
Correct.
It's just my fear, I just want to make sure that they're all be okay.
So, the parent university, is that the idea that if a child is caught bullying, the parent will be wired to take it, or is it something that we were?
No, the, the, no, I'm sorry, no. The parent university that we're going to be doing is going to be part of our parent involvement activity. We were requested to do more parent involvement on this subject. We also wanted to, like I said, we wanted to wrap in drug abuse, and then the self-harming of students. And so, we want to partner with the police department in the city and MHMR with that. We have offered bullying classes every year through parent involvement, but we have found that we don't have people attend. And just, just like we, we have parenting classes on drug and alcohol abuse. So, we are hoping that by offering it in what we call a parent university, and that may not be the name that it ends up with in October, that's what we're titling it by right now, for nothing better to call it. But if you, imagine going to a conference. If you are going to a conference, no one knows why I'm there, really. And so, I can pick whatever session I want to go to. And so, we are, we are thinking that by having it in a conference style, there is less stigma. We're thinking that that, that might be why parents aren't coming to our parent involvement sessions, because we know that the flyers are getting out there, we're distributing them, but we're not having a lot of parents show up. And so, this is going to be a new attempt, a new way of doing it by offering it in a conference style, on a, on a Saturday.
So, I got a legal question for Ron. It just seems to be that, you know, if you have a student who's bullying another student, you know, one-time offense is a little bit different than another pattern. You see a pattern where two or three times, you know, you notify a parent, of course, there are some other actions. The question is, is for further parent involvement, can we require the parent to attend the classes that you have set up, say, hey, look, you know, this is what we have? And I don't know from legal boundaries, I don't know what that stands for. In other words, the idea that if we just notify the parents, it, does that have enough teeth for the parents to stop and, and communicate with their child? One. And two, have the tools to communicate with the child? And two, have the tools to communicate with the child so they can, they can continue to move the child, so that child doesn't, continues to engage in that kind of activity? So that's kind of a question. I mean, legally, can we...
We can't force parents to attend. What we can do is advertise it in such a way that it's like the news, where you scare parents into saying, oh my God, I have to come to this. As an example, if you have a session on cyberbullying, which I've done a lot of those before, and you talk about all the fears, like in today's, today's Dallas Morning News, there was a whole story about how kids are being lured in this area into prostitution by pimps who are, who are soliciting kids and saying, oh, you have problems with your, your parents, come over to my house and I'll, I'll talk to you about it. And then they kidnap them, basically. There are all those things out there, and if we inform parents and talk to them about what can you do about protecting your child, you just have to hope more will show up.
Yeah, my biggest concern is that any of these policies put in, they should have some teeth as far as what the parent's concerned. Because ultimately, it's going to be the parent's responsibility to ensure that that, that actions are taken care of. And whether it be a drug situation, whether it be a bullying situation, whatever the case is, you know, if you notify a parent and the parent goes, whoa, you know what, I don't care, then in effect, it nullifies what we're doing at the district and puts us in a situation where we're reaching out, we're trying to engage the parents, we're trying to do the right thing. And I know it used to be the laws, I know with foul language, I think you could write a citation at one point, I don't think you can do that anymore. I don't, I don't know what the laws are now. But at one point, you know, you could write a citation and say, hey, you know, if you call for foul language, here's a $250, you know, ticket. Now, that had teeth because, you know what? If your student was in school and he wanted to mouth off to a teacher with foul language, okay, here you go. And that would help, and I don't know with the laws...
It's actually still a crime, but the problem is policing it, so to speak, and a lot of parents complained about the fact that their child was being sanctioned, yet employees sometimes cursed and got away with it. I'm not saying here, but in general, that's why a lot of districts don't necessarily use that technique.
But is it...
It's out there.
So laws are still...
Still legal to curse on campus.
So I mean, but are the laws, are there laws for citations still available or not? They are. So on the books, clearly, the citation is still available.
Well, yeah, that's the only way you do enforce it. But, you know, the problem would be send a lot of people at football games, a lot of citations.
But there's an age. There is an age in which you can, students have a certain age.
Adults aren't close to cursing on campus.
Oh, wow, we've all been, but we can always highly recommend classes for parents that are having, because sometimes it's not about, if parents are having difficulty, so we can always...
All you can do is offer it.
Yeah.
And the point is, is, you know, we want a parent to be educated about what's going on. And if their child is in school and they're running down playing a knockout game, then that's, that's dangerous. And the parent should be accountable and the student should be accountable.
And they should be, and I think our administrators make their best effort to get parents involved and to keep them educated. However, parents have to be willing to meet us halfway. There, we have a lot of control of what we can do, with what we can do with our students as far as making them serve I S S time or making them participate in small group sessions with a counselor, one-on-one sessions with a counselor, but to the extent of what we can do with, with parents, we are extremely limited.
Yeah, let me add that unfortunately, what studies have shown is also that a lot of the student bullies learned it at home. And parents, those parents aren't going to necessarily come to learn about what they've done.
What point did you make?
But our policy, we can do what we can to help the students.
Right, absolutely.
Try to get parents as involved as possible. So that's why we're reviewing all of this, to see what we can do, what other districts have done that have been successful.
And in our discipline policy that we brought forward to you a few, you know, a month or two ago, it is laid out with offense one, offense two, and it does grow. And it's different by age group, so elementary versus if it happens at secondary level.
Well, when I brought this up initially, my biggest concern is, we did have an issue, and other districts have implemented things that have been successful. And I wanted to see where we were, maybe something we weren't doing. I wanted to kind of look, compare, contrast, get some of those practices from districts that have had success with their program. And that's what I wanted to see, is if, is there something we're not doing that we could be doing? Maybe we're doing something, we're overkilling. You know, there could be a number of reasons why it's not successful, and maybe just a different approach altogether.
I don't think we're overkilling.
Well, hopefully not. No, no, I don't think, I don't think we are, it's just, I think...
I think we should certainly, now that school is starting and other districts, look at what other practices are taking place with some of our neighbors. Actually go in and visiting with other counseling departments and seeing what is working for them.
And that, when it started, that's what I want, I wanted to compare and contrast, what we are, what we're doing currently, what we have on the books versus some other areas that have been successful, what their appropriate...
We'll do that.
And going back to Mr. Flores' question about off-site bullying, a lot of times the students will utilize our computers to get on social media and bully. So if they are doing that off-site, the school can assign discipline to students if they're using our technology.
Because it occurs on our school property. I mean, that our, it's our computer, and we are able to track that.
We should be learning that as we speak.
They are. In fact, they're learning it right now in the video that they're taking during deployment. That is part of it.
Ms. Mika, thank you for me for taking all this request. I know it was kind of given to you after the fact.
And we will continue, we will continue working on it. So we will visit other districts and see what they're doing and make another update.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, this is hugely important to our community on this particular...
Okay, Mrs. Evans?
The Brent, we have one third grade opening, you've seen it on there a couple times. The reason being, our campus principal is being very wise in her management of this position, because she's seen some fluctuation between two grades. And as we're uncertain as whether the opening will actually be third or even second, it's, it's on pause a little bit right now while we watch numbers, so that we can see where we could be most effective with this opening. So there is an opening there, there is actually someone in mind for the opening, and we're just monitoring which grade the opening will be assigned to. At Chavez, that opening is gone, it's already been filled this afternoon. Lakeview does have a third grade and a music, those interviews are taking place this week. Prestwick, we split the positions, so we have now a tech apps, we're having trouble filling the Lego Robotics with the tech apps combination. Those positions ended up being split, and we have filled the tech app, so now we're still working on the Lego Robotics career portals, and that's also an interview process. Little Elm has a high school math position. As you recall, we had a math and credit recovery allotment position, or math allotment/credit recovery position. One of our high school teachers expressed an interest in that position and transferred in, leaving his straight math position open. And again, they are in the interview process to fill these. So we've, we're very much at the entrance process. Then in the administration update, our Assistant Superintendent of Learning and Leadership position still holds. Little Elm High School Assistant Principal is being recommended tonight. Lakeside Middle School Principal, I apologize for principal twice, it's being recommended tonight. And then the Technology Network Administration Administrator is still posted, we're waiting for that to close, to begin interviews.
All right. Great. This is an operations update. Mrs. Eagle?
Yes, members of the board, Ms. Greenhutch. President Hush tonight, we have Bob Templeton with us from Templeton, who's going to bring the board update of the second quarter, demographic report, which I think that you were wanting to be talked about during the...
Good evening, board president, members of the board. Mr. Kuti, very good to be here with you tonight. Tonight I will briefly touch on the D F W economy, what's going on with the housing market, and then ultimately, we'll talk about the projections for the upcoming school Well, Texas continues to be the number one state in the country for job growth and population growth, and the D F W region is now the number one city in the country for job growth. So this job growth is expected, is expected to hold for a couple of years with the recent announcement of some of the major employers that are coming to the area, Toyota, State Farm, the Nebraska Furniture Company, so there's several big employment, job growth areas that are coming to this part of the D F W region. The unemployment rates are improving, the national rate is at 6.3 percent, Texas is at 5.5, D F W M S A, which is metropolitan statistical area, is at 5.4, the counties at 4.9, and the city of Little Elm unemployment rate's at 3.7. One of the other big changes we're seeing in the economy right now is housing. So definitely, new housing is surging, we're seeing an increase in new housing across the state and specifically in those major cities in Texas. We're also seeing a surge in existing home sales. So existing home sales are doing very well, we're seeing some appreciation in the home values, so home prices are moving up as well due to the very hot housing market. In fact, as of May, the Texas, the single family has, single-family permits has increased 6.5 percent, and we're also seeing an increase in multifamily permits as well. As I mentioned, Dallas-Fort Worth is the number one city in the country for job growth, Houston is number four, and Austin is 12th, and San Antonio is 21st. Texas has four cities in the top 25, and it was very likely that Dallas and Houston will be in the top five for the foreseeable future due to the strengths of both those economies. The big driver for the Texas economy right now is the energy industry, and it is specifically oil. So oil is driving a lot of the growth in terms of value and in terms of jobs as well. In fact, the U.S. has become the number one producer of oil in the world, and Texas represents about 36 percent of that oil production of the United States. It's primarily coming out of two oil fields, which is the Permian Oilfield in Odessa area, and then also the Eagle Ford Shell is fast becoming the number one oil field in the country. And so we have two of those strong oil fields in the state of Texas. Some of the other headline news for employment, Toyota relocating from California to Plano. It's expected that by 2018, there will be 3,650 full-time jobs. The average salary is about 104,000, and a majority of those are likely not going to be coming from California, so they will be coming either locally or from those other parts of the country. State Farm Insurance is expanding. U S A A I T Operations Center, which was a $31 million facility that will house 680 new employees, and that's going to be phased in through about 2018. So several big news for employment growth in the north D F W area. Just another overview of the D F W economy, annual job growth is up 3.3 percent, unemployment is down 1.3 percent, Texas oil and gas rig count is up 6 percent, the average price for an existing home is up 7 percent, and inventory is down 12 percent. And as long as that inventory stays really tight, like it is, where it's negative, then those home values are likely to keep climbing up and appreciating pretty significantly. Just another look at existing home sales across D F W. Year-to-date sales have flattened out at about 43,142 sales. The average price is up 7 percent, median price is up 8 percent. The number of listings is down 6 percent, days on the market is down 12 percent, and months of supply is down 12 percent. There again, when the listings, days on the market, and months of supply are negative, that's that recipe for increasing home prices. Here's another look at the existing home sales across the state. And then we also track foreclosures. Foreclosures during the housing crash is what really hurt home values, because you can see we had a significantly larger number of foreclosures. Now we've kind of bottomed out in foreclosures, and you can see that number's down around 14, 13 posted foreclosures per quarter. It's, when the housing market is as strong as it is right now, it is much easier for distressed homeowners to sell their homes. That's what helps the foreclosure market stay so low, because they can sell their homes so much quicker. Across D F W, we're building 22,513 homes. You can see back during the peak, back in 2006, we were building over 50,000 homes. Of course, that was too many. The, what was considered equilibrium should have been about 30,000 homes, so we overbuilt for a period, and then it plummeted down and stayed really relatively low from 2009 until 2012. 2012 is when we started to see that pickup in terms of new home construction. Unfortunately, the price of new home construction is also climbing pretty strongly as well. Little Elm is ranked 13th in the D F W region for new home construction. You're building right at 512 new home starts, and you've got 535 closings, that's an annualized number. We have 891 vacant developed lots. That's a little tight, so that's kind of low. What's considered equilibrium for vacant developed lots is a two-year supply. So you can see, with a two-year supply, we need to have over 1,000 vacant developed lots. That's why we're seeing this surge of developers now coming back to the district, coming back to the cities to present their development plans, because we're short lots. We're actually short lots all across D F W, so there's several markets that are tight in terms of vacant developed lots. Now futures, you have 6,143 futures. A vacant developed lot is hard, it's on the ground, those are lots that are ready for builders to build on today. A future is a concept plan, a preliminary plan, it's sometimes referred to as paper lots, but they're in the development pipeline, but typically, it can take anywhere from 14 to two years, 14 months to two years to get lots on the ground. So you've got lots that are coming, but right now, it's a little top, a little tight. So any slowdown that we have right now is going to likely be more a function of the tightness in lot supply than it is about a change in economic conditions in this area. Here's just a graph of starts and closings. We started 126 homes in the second quarter. You can see, that is down from a year ago. A year ago, we started 175. And we closed 146 homes in the second quarter. I believe we're definitely on pace to see over 500 homes occupied for this next school year. So that's going to put our, in my opinion, our projections in line with what's going on with the housing market. And here's your top 10 subdivisions for new home construction. The top 10 makes up a majority of all of the housing activity in the school district. Of course, your number one development for new home construction right now is Hidden Cove. Hidden Cove has closed 143 homes in the last year, and then the Tribute is second, they've closed 135. Now, Hidden Cove is not as big of a development, so it's going to start to drop off the list just because they're not going to have as many lots. But Tribute has more lots coming, and so the Tribute's going to likely stay up in your top one or two spots for the foreseeable future. You can see the growth is spread out, it's in several different elementary zones. It's in the STEM zone, it's also in the Hackberry Zone, but we also have housing growth in Lakeview and Chavez, or not, not much in Chavez. But Oak Point is also starting to see some development activity with the Woodridge tract. So we're starting to see developers express an interest in developing some property in the Oak Point Elementary Zone. Vacant developed lots is where the builders can build on today. You can see, now Frisco Lakes, we put an asterisk behind that, just so, we like to track that, because it does have an impact on your property values. Even though they're frozen, they still do pay into the total appraisal value of the district. That's the number one for vacant developed lots. They have 223 vacant developed lots, 923 futures, but we're never going to see any kids generated from those lots in that development. But the Tribute has 144 vacant developed lots. They have right now 493 futures, but they're also developing another section of the Tribute that's likely going to bring on several hundred additional lots that are in the development process right now. As a part of our research, we contacted developers, the cities, Frisco, the city of Little Elm, the city of Oak Point, to... the City of Oak Point, to stay in touch with what's going on with the development community for future lots. Now these are the lots that are down the road. The Valencia on the Lake, which I believe is American Centurion, and I know there's been discussion with the district about some land swap, because there's a section of that that splits with Denton ISD, but that represents 1,236 lots, and that's a significant number. And American Centurion is the kind of developer that is a production builder, that will be high-density, and it will be a area that will generate kids. It's a significant number of kids. Your next one is, of course, the Frisco Lakes, which no impact, but that Timber Lake is 869 future lots, and then Paloma Creek South that's in the Little Elm School District is 665. So you can see, here's the top 10 for future developments that are in the planning process to deliver lots to the Little Elm School District. We sort that information by zone so that you can see which zones are going to experience the most growth. Of course, it's primarily in the STEM zone, it's in the Lakeview zone, and it's in the Hackberry zone. The STEM zone has started 233 homes in the last year. They have, Lakeview has 111, and then Hackberry has 93. So this is the data that helps us to build the enrollment projections. Here's just a view of the Valencia on the Lake, 1,239 lots. Phase one is under construction. Phase one is going to have 209 lots. It's expected to be delivered spring of 2015, which that means it's really going to impact the school district probably in the latter part of '15, but primarily it's going to be '16 before you start to see a significant number of homes that will impact the district. So it'll be really '16 before you see a significant mass of students. The Tribute, now we talked to the developer a couple of times to try to get our hands around the total number of lots. What they're estimating to us is total build-out for them would be, for single-family, 2,400 to 2,600 single-family lots. Now there's also some multifamily pieces to that, which would be between 800 and 1,000 multifamily units, and there's also going to be some villas, townhomes, condos. The more expensive the townhomes, condos, the lower the yield, so we don't expect a high yield from the multifamily condos or townhomes. But the single-family could generate, when it's all said and done, there could be 700 to 800 K-A students just in the Tribute.
Was that number again?
700 to 800. Now there again, that's going to take a while. You see that they're building about 100 to 120 homes a year, so therefore it's going to take a while to go through that. So this neighborhood likely has a 15- to 20-year life of building homes, and this is very consistent with what we've seen in other large master plan communities. Some of the other areas that we're watching, Rhythm Dell by the Lake, which is in the City of Hackberry area, it's 700 lots. D.R. Horton is the developer slash builder, and they're a production builder, so their intent will be to build through that as quickly as they can. That will likely be a, anywhere from around four to five-year build-out of that 700 lots. Grand opening is scheduled for July of '14. The absorption is 25 homes in '14, and then 40 homes a year, and its price range is between $210,000 to $280,000. The church property, I don't know how they got that name, but it's 350 future lots. Phase one has been approved. Dirt work starting in late 2014. The developer's telling us first home's expected late 2015, and we do not have the absorption rates for that. But once we know the price range and who the builder is, then we'll be able to get a better idea of the absorption rates. Wild Ridge, which was also, AKA, also known as Timber Lake, that's up in the Oak Point area, 869 future lots. Impact to the district at 2015 at the very earliest. There again, you'll likely feel the biggest impact beyond that. It's Taylor Duncan interest. Now there is a section that is split between Little Elm ISD and Denton ISD, and the starting price range is more than 250. And that red line illustrates the boundary line between the district of Little Elm and Denton, and it's that northern section that splits between Denton and Little Elm. Of course, your, your school is really close to that area. And here's something new that we started tracking for all of our clients this year is tracking the property values. This is looking at the 2012 values compared to the 2013. This is single-family values. We just got the 2014 appraisal data, so we'll do the same when we get the student data this next year. But these yellow areas have seen little change in their property value from 2012 to 2013. The beige has had a growth of between 3 and 10 percent. The turquoise has had a growth of between 10 to 15 percent, and the purple areas have seen a change of approximately 15 percent. The good thing is, you don't have a lot of red on this map. So as a whole, your property values from 2012 to 2013 were very stable, and you did have some growth. Most of our clients are reporting to us that we're, they're seeing anywhere from 6 to 8 percent growth in their total appraised value. Now I know that doesn't have a big impact on your MNO side of your operation, but it does have an impact on the INS side, and it can be very favorable to help you with the INS side of your revenue. Now here is looking at the appraisal district data, and it's looking at the different price categories of single-family homes and the students that are living in those homes. So you'll notice that 58 percent of the homes in Little Elm are priced or have a value, appraised value of less than $150,000, and then you've got 31 percent of your homes that are in that 150 to 250. I was just at Eagle Mountain ISD's meeting just about an hour and a half ago. They're 73 percent below $150,000. That has profound impact on the district's revenue, when that large share of your students are coming from homes that are priced that low, because the tax that's generated off that call, it makes it problematic to fund the education from that. But what you'll, we'll also point out is the yields that we're experiencing from that. The total yield from your single-family homes, this does not include trailer parks, does not include rental property, it's only single-family homes, but the yield averages about .4. Now we expect that yield to climb a little bit as the new homes that are built in some of these areas are designed to be homes that will typically have families with kids. Okay, looking at your enrollment history, this past year, fall of October, this is October snapshot data. This past year in October 13, the district grew 237 students, which is 3.3 percent growth. We have the cohort table in the middle there. That shows you the change from one grade to the next year. So to give you an example of the cohort, if you look in the 2013 first grade number is 1.028. Basically what that means is, the first grade class of this past October grew 2.8 percent, and that's comparing itself to the previous year's kindergarten class. That's how we calculate cohorts. We use the cohort to help us with your enrollment projections. We primarily use it at the high school level, because you'll notice when we get to high school, what happens with ninth grade? Ninth grade swells up, and that's a function that we see at virtually all high schools in Texas. They don't quite get enough credits to become sophomores that first year they're in high school, so then they stay there, they pin up, and then that causes the 10th grade number to be below one. So those high school cohorts are not a function of this high school, it's a function of the general high school, the way things work across Texas. We have one client that we don't see this. It's the HEB School District. The HEB School District, out of our 50 clients that we work with, does not have this high school cohort pattern. The reason they don't have it? Those ninth graders are not at high school. Those ninth graders are down at junior high. So in HEB, they still have, they've had this for a long, long time, the junior high grade configuration of 7, 8, 9. So those ninth graders are really motivated to get to 10th grade, if they want to get up there where the high school is. But all the other high schools that we work with, Carroll School District, Keller, Northwest, Eagle Mountain, they all have a negative cohort at high school. Now some of that is early graduations, so it's not just all a dropout issue or a retention issue. We are seeing more and more kids that are graduating earlier because of the ease of getting classes online, and so there's, there's that available as well. Now if we just rolled up your kids, just advanced them all, the district could grow 176 students. If we use a three-year cohort average, you'd grow about 135 students. What we're forecasting for next year is growth of 4.8 percent. It's growth of 317 students. And then the next year is 327. It drops off a little bit. The reason it's dropping off is, we've got a really large ninth grade class in the system right now, and we've got a large eighth grade system, an eighth grade class in the system. So as those migrate through, that's what causes that drop in 2016 and 2017, where it slows down just a little bit. But then it basically maintains about a 3 percent growth over the next 10 years. In five years, the district could see an additional 1,359 students, which would put the district's enrollment of 7,996 students by 2018. In 10 years, the district could see 2,761 students, which would put the enrollment at 9,398. I'm often asked, how certain am I of these projections? Well, I'm very certain that you're going to get to 7,996 students. Don't have a doubt in my mind at all that you're going to reach that. The only question I have is, is it going to happen in four years, or is it going to happen in five or six? The district has enough lots and enough vacant land that you are going to be a growing district for a significant amount of time. So the challenge becomes anticipating the swings in the economy, swings in housing, and the swings in your mobility. A change in your program that you offer has an impact on enrollment. If you look at the enrollment history, what happened to pre-K three years ago? Dropped. Dropped significantly. Why did it drop? There was a change in program. So the program changed. That had an impact on kindergarten. So those things that, that happen programmatically have an impact on enrollment. Now what does this enrollment look like at the campus level? Here's our enrollment projections. Now I put the history in there for 2012, and then you can also see what the, the enrollment was as of the fall of '13. So it says current, but that was really for the, the school year, this past school year. But this last year at elementary, we had 3,441 students, and we grew 93 elementary students this past year. So I'm forecasting growth of 92 students at the elementary level this year. Now we have built in the STEM, I guess, which I should change the label to the Prestwick Academy or School, and you can see we're forecasting at the elementary level 327 students, and at Oak Point, 643. Lakeview, oops, Lakeview is 661, Hackberry 581, Chavez 653, and Brent is 669. Now there is always, at the start of the school year, a lot of turnover amongst students that are leaving, that don't come back, and the new students. So it takes about two weeks into the school year before we really have a good number of what enrollment's going to settle out to be. Luckily, it's gotten a little quicker because of starting the school year a little later. When we used to start the school year in early August, we would not know what the enrollment was going to be until after Labor Day. Well, now we start later and it's a little quicker to know that. Now the STEM numbers do have the elementary, they're separated out the middle school. So the middle school STEM shows up in the second page. The STEM junior high, we're anticipating 396 students at the grade 6 through 8. Lakeside has a reduction now of about, and their enrollment will be 1,176. The Little Elm High School's enrollment will be 1,846. So we're forecasting growth of 317 across the district. Now we received a couple of files from the district related to the STEM so that we can see how the STEM numbers were tracking. As of today, we're showing that there were 623 students that are confirmed, they've been approved through the application process, and they're enrolled. We've got roughly 45 elementaries that are approved, but they have not enrolled or registered. And then there's another 44, 6 through 8, that are approved, they filled out an application, but they have not registered or enrolled. So there is still a little bit of wiggle room in this, but if we assume that all of these that have applied but have not registered, if I assume all those happen, the number would come in at 737. We forecasted 723. So we are really close to what was projected.
The question, of those students that you have projected here in, in your table, approximately what percentage are from the HOA right now at this time?
Oh, it, there's maybe about 80 kids from the HOA.
Okay. So about how, how long would it take? Because you said this, you're talking about build-out within that HOA being 10, 15 years. How long would it take for just that HOA to fill up that, that campus?
It's going to take more than 10 years.
So HOA build-out is, is way further into the future?
Yes.
Ms. Single, what is the capacity from elementary with the new addition, the new wing?
With the new, it's between, the actual capacity's 891.
Okay.
As far as? What's STEM, 891?
That's total.
Total, right.
That's total.
K grade.
Okay.
821?
891.
891.
A majority of the kids that are now at the STEM, and these numbers are from outside the zone. It's the transfer. And most of them are in district transfers. They're coming from Chavez zone, Lakeview zone, Brent. There again, I would say, you know, there's going to be that, that week to two week after school starts that you're getting the note, because there's, there's going to be a lot of root basket turnover. I'm always, when you see that enrollment number of growth of 317, the reality is, there's going to be over 400 new to the district kids, but there's going to be anywhere from, you know, 50 to 100 that leave, and that happens everywhere.
So about 10 percent mobility?
About that, maybe 10 to 15 percent. And unfortunately, it takes about two weeks to get that resolved, because the campus people have to, and you don't want to necessarily remove them too early, because if you remove them too early, and then they show back up, then you got to recreate it on a schedule and, and become problematic.
This Hackberry dip, what, what does that attribute it to for 2014, 2015?
That's because of the redistribution of the attended zones. So, you know, the, that, we created an attended zone for the STEM, so that, those kids that were in the STEM attended zone, Prestwick attended zone, have come out of, of Hackberry. That's, you know, we had 321 kids at Zellers last year, so then the Zellers kids were split between Chavez and Brent, and then there was a shift from Hackberry down into, so the Hackberry zone got a little smaller, the Brent zone got a little bigger, and the Chavez zone got a little bigger. I can't remember if Lakeview, Lakeview might have been a factor as well.
Yes, it was.
Yes.
So, so Lakeview was a, is definitely a area of growth. The couple of other areas, Brent, Chavez, seem to be relatively stable over a period of time, but we see definitely Lakeview.
Well, the Lakeview impact is going to be the Valencia. So when that Valencia comes online, that's what's going to really drive the Lakeview number.
So there likely will not be an, an impact on current students at the STEM Academy based on projections as far as impacting the students that are currently enrolled.
Correct.
Because the capacity at that campus, although we, we projected far less for staffing, the capacity at the campus is almost at that number.
Yes. And you, what's going to happen as well, you'll have the ability through your control of, of your future transfers, because there's going to be a significant number of kids, this happens in every school, that leave. Their parents move to a different area, so then what comes in behind that, hopefully, will be the growth in Tribute. So the growth in the Tribute will make up that difference, but if it doesn't, then you control it with future. But if it doesn't, then you control it with future transfers. And so I don't know what your process is for opening that window up for future transfers.
Our future zone changes.
Our future zone changes. Either of those. A lot of districts that we work with open up the transfer window, say in the spring, and they might open it up from January to March. And so if you want to transfer to a different campus, then you've got to do it in that spring period. So then, and they shut it down after that. And then they wait for the next year.
This is very helpful.
You have answered your question about.
Well, in summary, the Texas economy continues to be the strongest in this country, and it will likely continue to be the strongest for the foreseeable future. The DFW will continue to be a leader in job growth and population growth. The starts have slowed a little bit in the first half of two thousand fourteen, but vacant belt lot supply needs to increase by at least a hundred lots to sustain this growth. And I think the developers are starting to get those wheels turning to deliver these future lots. The STEM and Lakeview elementary zones have the highest activity of new home starts, and that represents about sixty-three percent of your new home activity is in those two zones. Little Elm ISD can expect an increase of thirteen hundred and fifty-nine students in the next five years, which will put their enrollment at almost eight thousand kids. Little Elm ISD is projected to have over nine thousand three hundred students by the year two thousand twenty-three. Be happy to answer any other questions and go back. Continue to get the slides.
Ms. Williams? Does that help you with your question that you had earlier?
Well, not really, because you say it's for those that are currently enrolled. Yeah, it'll help me through this first year, but what about next year? So what if they don't want to start this year, and then next year, the people who have contracts on other building areas, like in the shores of Dinco, who are being told now they may not be able to come because they're currently not in their home, but are they going to be able to get in next year?
Well, I think one of our concerns was capacity, and you addressed that we're not near as close as what we thought we were. So it looks like we've got.
Yeah, capacity. And that's, I mean, we still got control over zoning and class allocation.
Yeah, so we do have control over that. So we will definitely be looking at other options other than, yeah, so.
So the capacity can be increased from the seven fifty to nine hundred?
Well, the capacity is at eight ninety-one. And I think that was something that we pointed out last.
We're staffed at about a hundred and fifty or so. Don't quote me on the map right here, but we can, if we were to grow faster than projected, then we have the space available to accommodate for more students by adding staff. Right now, we, our capacity because of staff is up seven hundred and fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty, correct.
From what I'm seeing, you're below that seven fifty threshold based on the numbers that we've gotten.
So we even have a lot more room for growth, to accommodate.
Yes. So the kids in that area, including kids who are transferred, should be fine and staying in that school. Okay. All right.
So the question again still though is, did you say ten to fifteen years that HOA builds out that they solely build that school?
Yes. Beyond, it will likely be beyond ten years. Now, the effect of that is that controlling the future transfers, not the ones that are there right now. But you'll have the ability to look at that in the fall, you know, once the enrollment gets settled, and then you can look, because we'll be able to separate out who the zone kids are and who the transfer kids are.
Can we communicate that as quickly, especially the peers that are enrolled? I want them to get this communicated as soon as possible.
Yes.
And then I've got a future file for that one. I'll hold it to the end.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Good luck with the start of the school year.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, at this time? At this time, the board recessed to close meetings, and the conference room is permitted by the Texas Open Meetings Act, code subchapter five five one dot zero seven four, five five one dot zero seven one, five five one dot zero zero two, at eight thirteen. Recreating and opening open meetings at eight fifty-eight. Move action items. Discuss approve the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget adoption.
So moved?
Moved. Second. The discussion.
Yes.
I'll move it from here.
I took the flipper. We don't need a flipper. We're good.
You know, it's really that time of year, our fiscal year starts at paper one. We've really been working on the budget since about November doing projections. We started giving presentations to the board, I think in March. The board adopted the compensation plan in April or May. We've been tweaking numbers since then. So we're really pleased tonight to show the board the recommendations for our fourteen fifteen budget for the three funds that the board approves, which is the general fund, the child nutrition fund, and the debt service fund. We have projected revenues based upon our estimated values and our certified values that have come in now, as well as our state funding that we receive relating to the number of ADA that we project for next year. So we are looking at our estimated revenues for the fourteen fifteen school year to be at forty-nine point four million dollars, coming from those sources of revenue. We are also looking at our expenditures. We do budget training in February. The budgets are usually due back into my office the week after spring break. We look at all our staffing patterns, initial C, instruction, which is in function eleven. The majority of our budget is in that, thirty point nine million dollars. The rest of it falls between instructional leadership, down to communities, the debt that we have on our buses, on the lease payments, as well as our tax maintenance notes. And then the CAD is really our shared service agreements with the central appraisal district, where our expenditures are broken down in those budget function categories at forty-nine point four million dollars. It's broken down to show that we spend the majority of our funds on instruction, and that is a good thing. Sixty-two percent of our expenditures are in function eleven, which is pure instruction. Function, instructional leadership is at eight percent. Student services, which is our extracurricular, as well as our transportation, is ten percent. You'll see general administration is four percent, and our facilities, technology, and security is at that, the thirteen percent figure. So we'll see that those are how we come down by function. So to justify and to explain the budget, we actually projected revenues of forty-nine point four. We were a little bit over budget on our expenditure side. We did go back and revisit the staffing allocations that were given, and found a couple of positions that we could absorb, as well as our benefits came in a little lower once we received our premium notices for this year. So that's really how we were able to bring this budget back down into a balanced budget for the general fund. The debt service fund is fund five eleven. We have estimated revenues of eleven million three hundred thirty thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars, and it's made up of ten million point five of coming from the local sources. And we received a little bit of EDA and IFA, which is state funding for our facilities at seven hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. Our debt payments, we have a debt schedule, advertisement schedule, and our debt payments for fourteen fifteen are a little over three million dollars in principal, interest of eight point two million dollars. We have fees associated with that around at twenty million, at twenty thousand dollars for a total debt service payment for the fourteen fifteen year of eleven million three hundred thirty thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars. So again, we project, we present a balanced budget for our debt service fund, debt service fund, fund five eleven. So for the fourteen fifteen general fund and debt service funds, for this particular budget workshop, we are proposing a forty-nine point four million dollar general fund maintenance and operation budget, if you will, on the debt service side, the five eleven fund to pay the debt related to our facilities of eleven point three. And we'll be proposing a tax rate on the M and O side, or the maintenance and operation side, at a dollar four, and a proposed tax rate on the IMS or the debt service side of fifty cents per hundred dollars of value, for a total proposed tax rate of a dollar fifty-four per hundred dollars of value for the fourteen fifteen tax year. This particular rate has been in effect for five to eight years. Our tax rate has not gone up in that many, in that good time. The other fund that the board approves is child nutrition. Child nutrition is fund two forty, and you'll see our local, our revenues projected, local revenue is a little over a billion, a little bit of state fund comes in, it's in federal funds for our breakfast and lunch program. We're projecting a two point eight million dollar budget in child nutrition. Again, on the expenditure side, our payroll's about one point one. We have a little bit of contracted services. We have one point five in supplies, that's primarily food that we have, that we purchase in order to cook, to prepare food for our kids. For our expenditure side, two point eight million dollars as well. Presenting a balanced budget on the child nutrition side, our revenues are two point eight, and expenditures are two point eight. So combined funds, the general fund, the debt service fund, and the child nutrition fund, you see those combined funds, the general fund of forty-nine point four, the debt service fund of eleven point three, and the child nutrition fund at two point eight, for a total combined funds of sixty-three point five million dollars. And we'd be recommending to the board that they adopt the funds as presented, a total combined of sixty-three point six million dollars of those three funds. Any questions? I'll be happy to answer them.
So Linda, where would this leave our fund balance at the end of the year? Would there be any kind of hit to fund balance at all?
Would this fund, we're actually projecting fund balance for the thirteen fourteen school year now. We start projecting that usually in January, February. I can tell you, right now, our fund balance is anticipated to go up. The reason why primarily is because of some insurance recovery that we received. If you'll remember, we had some hail damage, and that does go into, right into miscellaneous revenue of our general fund. So we're looking at our general fund fund balance instead of going down based on the decisions of budget amendments that we made. Our fund balance is actually looking as though it will go up at the end of thirteen fourteen. And then the board will need to decide, you know, what we're going to do as far as taking care of some of the facilities that have had some damage relating to them.
So what are some of the projections that you have now of fund balance increase?
Well, our fund balance, beginning year fund balance at eighteen point two million dollars. We anticipate our fund balance to be at least twenty million dollars at the end of thirteen fourteen.
So a couple million more?
Yes, sir.
And all that is projected for health insurance repairs and some of the facility repairs that we have currently in place right now?
Well, the hail damage recovery and, you know, probably, you know, probably be twenty and a half, twenty-one million, because we're going to absorb, we'll actually have a little additional fund balance based on our projections at this time, if we will. But the big hunk of it is the insurance recovery. And we'll be happy to provide a report to that at the next board meeting. I mean, I have that calculation, I just didn't bring it with me on the exact numbers, but we really started crunching those numbers several months ago. And as each month go by, we revisit those numbers. But the last time I looked at it, I knew that it was going up, you know, twenty and a half million dollars, instead of going down, it's actually going up.
That eliminates one of my future agenda items, so please.
Okay, we have to. We've got that.
The insurance.
Insurance plan.
And we're just kind of waiting for the sand and the, the sand and the things to kind of settle first to bring that back to you to look at.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? There is a motion in second. All those in favor approving the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget adoption? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen tax rate?
Yes, sir. You know, once the board has adopted the budget, then the next action that's required to be taken is the adoption of the tax rate. You know, CE legal requires you to the superintendent to prepare a budget for your consideration, and then actually there's an adoption of the tax rate. We recommend the following tax rate for fourteen fifteen, the maintenance of operation of a dollar four per hundred dollars of value, and interest is sinking of fifty cents per hundred dollars of value, in order for us to support the budget that was just adopted.
So moved?
There's a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? New? Are we both? You ready to have a guess? Okay. We have a motion in second. All those in favor of two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen tax rate? Opposed? Motion carries. Discuss approve recommendation for Lakeside Middle School Principal?
Order trustees, I would like to make a recommendation for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year's Lakeside Middle School Principal. I would like to recommend Mr. Trey Metter, who is currently serving Little Elm ISD as the interim principal at Lakeside Middle School.
So moved? Second. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry.
Two of you just did.
Oh, two, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It don't matter.
This one. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of Mr. Trey Metter for Lakeside Middle School Principal? All those opposed? Discuss recommendations for Little Elm High School Assistant Principal?
Order trustees, I would like to recommend Christopher Ressa as the new LEHS Assistant Principal. He is currently serving as an administrative intern in Garland ISD.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor for Little Elm High School Assistant Principal, Christopher Ressa? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, discussion approve the safety audit?
So moved?
So moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the safety audit? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item, nine F, discussion approve the Valencia land agreement?
So moved?
So moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I think it's just important for us to say that, I, well, for me, I think this is a good idea for the district. Because it's a win-win for us, right? If we, if we're not able to build, the land goes back to Valencia. If we're able to build, then we have basically use of land that, you know, we have just by agreement of building a school there, nothing else. So I think it's a great idea for the district.
Agreed. No, we can have to meet spring with taxes, just hey, they're willing to help us out with land and location stuff.
Yeah, so we're getting land donated to us.
Right, eighteen acres. Eighteen acres worth of land. No further discussion? All in favor of the Valencia land agreement? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up, future agenda items?
Hey, hold on. Dr. Rain, you're afraid. We've got to go back and do seven A.
Oh, seven A. My bad. Oh, additional, thank you, Ray. Move back to the synergy agenda item, that's where we have that after the budget. Discuss approve additional FTEs. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. You approve?
Is the motion approved? Is there a second? There's a second. Any additional discussion? No discussion. All those in favor of approving additional FTEs? All those opposed? Motion carries. Approve additional FTEs. Item ten, future agenda items?
I've got one. I've always got one. I'd like to put the STEM policy review back on, because I'd like to review it in its entirety.
Do you want to review it or take it up for approval?
I would like, well, I'd like to review it with the new information that we got from the Demographers Report. I would really like to take a different approach. I'd like to look at it completely.
Also, I would like to put on, I want to say it's the local committees that deal with the STEM Academy, review those policies.
I just want to follow up on the ROTC. Are we going to send another survey?
Yeah, that's a new word. It's going to come in September. Also, I do have a question. A while back, we were looking at a firm to help us with form surveys, and we brought that forward, just wanted to know the status for that.
We're still working with him. If y'all would like us to continue to move forward, we can plan to submit the, plan to distribute the surveys in October, if that's something y'all are still interested in going forward with.
Let's discuss it. Or divide for discussion, please.
Yeah, I'd like to see a draft of a policy, not saying what act it, but I think it was interesting, the public comments that we had earlier. I do know that the law, correct me if I'm wrong, does allow for public comments during a board meeting. So essentially, the public comments at the beginning of the board meeting where we're not able to respond and to that, or. to, to that, or for those items that are not on the agenda. For items that are on the agenda, we are allowed to engage in dialogue and discussion with the audience. That first part should only be for, for non-agenda items. I'd like to see some draft of a policy, some working documents, procedures, where potentially, we have more engagement with the audiences that come. You know, a lot of people may not come because they know they can't talk, they know we can't respond, they know they can't be heard. You know, there's a, there's a big pitfall in doing that. We've gotta put some guidelines around, you know. We encourage it, but it's gonna be limited to ten minutes, otherwise, these meetings are gonna drag all night, so. I'm not sure what the policies are out there, what the districts are doing, what the town councils are doing. But I'd like to see us potentially look at that as an option, um, to get more engagement, get more, um, have a little more of a dialogue.
Last week, that was one of my, uh, future agenda items, was actually reviewing our public input policy. So I might add that to the list of what I gave you last week. So that's a great idea.
I can address something.
Okay.
Look at my suggestions.
Also, you wanted it?
Well, that's what I gave him last week. That was the same policy, yeah, to change our public input policy on what we have, on what we allow.
Yeah, I can send you the, the draft. Because that, what Mr. Vigus is saying is adds to it.
Yeah, it adds to it, so.
Uh, the other, the other thing I have is, and I'm fine with us not discussing this, but we've gone through this year after year about the board suite at football games, and we've always tried to do something with that, invite teachers of the year, invite public service officials. I know we just got our packet, um, and a number of the games said unknown. So I'd like just some recommendations, and it doesn't have to be a formal vote. You know, I would definitely like to see teachers of the year one, one game in there, uh, which I think leaves two unaccounted for. There are, you've got five home games. So leaves three unaccounted for. I'd like to make sure that we fill the suite with guests, the board suite with guests. I'm fine letting you guys pick who that is.
We'll work with the board to, to select a groups to fill those suites.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't need to be a formal vote, but definitely teachers of the year for one.
For sure.
You know, to add to what you just said, Cooper, and I know you probably have a few more, but, on, in those games where they're, uh, i- it's, so teachers of the year is great, but every week that we're there, I would like to meet someone from faculty and staff who's at the game, right? Uh, to come up, talk to us, have dinner with us, department head, someone picked by the department head, or whomever, just to sit there and have that conversation and that dialogue.
Engagement's going really important.
Yep.
They may not wanna do that with you, Chris, for.
Guess what?
But we could do that with students as well, just add a lot of that. There's, there's all kinds of stuff.
Student councils.
Yeah, the community, you know, good, great behavior utmost.
Student council's making a name.
Yeah, yeah.
Any further feature?
Last, last thing for me, sorry, I'm not meaning to keep you. I know back in July, there were a number of emails from concerned citizens. I think, um, your wife was one of them, or some other people that, um, that expressed some concerns. Had those been responded to?
Yes.
How do we as a board? Can we put that as a future agenda item, that he would read those responses to us? How is, how is he able legally to respond, and we see what his responses were?
Let me share, please share.
It has to come from Mr. Reteiro's. He can share some.
Well, I don't know who made the, who made the responses? I mean, the responses.
He did.
We, I mean.
Mr. Reteiro's can share those with the board members.
Directly or to Mr. Reteiro's?
Either way. Whatever you guys decide. You wanna, you wanna. What's the standard way of doing it?
Yeah.
It's better if the superintendent does, because that way we keep the records where we need them.
Right.
In case there's public information requests.
I just want to make sure we're legal in terms of what information we should.
Are you okay with, uh, Mr. Reteiro's gonna send them off?
So if you can forward those to him, okay.
They may or may not.
Actually, you probably have, he has a copy of them already.
They may or may not be confidential, depending on, um, like, we wouldn't be able to share the, the member of the public's email address and things, so some things may have to be redacted. If there's student identifiable information, we'd redact that also. From, if it, if there's a public information request, not to you, you can get that.
Okay.
So if you want to, he, he had a copy of those.
If you can forward.
Absolutely.
How many, I think there were four.
There are several.
Yeah, we're now.
Next enough, or a few, two.
Yeah. We're trying to be productive. I think one of the things is, is the timing. Respond on a bunch quicker. Just quicker to do it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any board comments?
I'd like to go ahead and just publicly acknowledge and thank Mayor David Hillon and Town Manager Matt Mueller for connecting us with Valencia. That whole project really got started, um, by some initiation from, from the town and putting the two parties together, so. Thank you for Mr. Hillon and Mr. Mueller and, and driving that for us and getting us some done with that.
I'd like to comment today, um, it was a wonderful day of convocation. Uh, really enjoyed the opportunity there to meet with everyone. And it was just a wonderful opportunity for everyone to connect, um, and hear the voices of, of our leaders and the voices of our kids in the community, so, really, really nice to have. Great job. Great job.
Anything else? All right, entertaining motion, adjourned.
So moved?
Second. All in favor? During that.